Good evening. I would like to call to order the January eighth, 2018 Belbrook City Council meeting to order whatever would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. McGill?
Here.
Mrs. Middlestutter?
Here.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schweller?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here. Formal approval of the City Council work session and regular meeting minutes of our December eleventh, 2017 meeting. May I have a motion to... Is there any corrections or additions to the meeting minutes as written?
None, Mayor.
None, Mayor.
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as written. Mayor's announcements, the special guests, I really don't have any this evening. We did have a 5:30 work executive session with Personnel Matters, Employment and Compensation of Public Employees, and we also had a 6:30 to 7:00 work session to discuss council committee assignments and deputy mayor's selection. And that is all I have. We have no public hearings this evening. We do have an introduction of an ordinance, ordinance number 2018-1. Mr. McGill.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2018-1, an ordinance submitting charter amendments to the electors of the city of Belbrook at the general election to be held November 6th, 2018, whereas the city of Belbrook received a request to change the minimum voting age for municipal-related elections, and whereas the change of the voting age requires an amendment to the charter of the city of Belbrook, and whereas the city of council studied the request and has concluded that a charter amendment should be submitted to the electors of the municipality for approval pursuant to Article 18, Section 9, Section 8 of the Ohio Constitution. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains in Section 1 that the following charter addition shall be submitted to the electors of the municipality at the general election to be held on November 6th, 2018. Section 11.05, "For purposes of municipal elections, a qualified elector shall be a resident of the city, be at least 16 years of age, and be registered to vote with the Green County Board of Elections." Section 2, that the ballot language shall read as follows, "Shall this charter of the municipality of Belbrook, Ohio be amended to change the minimum voting age for municipal elections to 16 years of age." Section 3, "Not less than 30 days prior to November 6th, 2018, the clerk shall mail a copy of the proposed amendments to each elector whose name appears upon the poll or registration books of the last regular or general election held within the municipality." Section 4, "The ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law."
Yes, as council knows, this topic has been brought up by a couple of high school students here in Belbrook requesting that the minimum voting age, at least consideration of the lowering of the minimum voting age to 16, this would only apply to municipal-related elections, which would be council and any tax levies that the city were to put on the ballot. It would not have anything to do with the school levy, tax issue, township issues, county, statewide, anything like that. It would only be for municipal-specific issues. At our last meeting in December, after discussion, the students were here, council directed me to draft this ordinance. What this ordinance is here tonight is just an introduction. Council has the ability, if they want to introduce this ordinance, there'll be a public hearing held at the January 22nd meeting. If it were to then be approved at the January 22nd meeting, then it would go on the November 6th ballot to be voted on by the electors. If it is not introduced, then it would cease. There would be nothing else that would happen on this issue at this point in time. I know council has had numerous discussions on that over the past several meetings, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have as it relates specifically to this ordinance at this time.
If we vote yes on this, I may be repeating what you just said, but just to be clear, that means that in the next meeting, we would have a public hearing on it?
Yes.
Two public hearings or just one?
Just one.
Okay.
Just a single public hearing. So this, all we're doing tonight would be to authorize it to have a public hearing. If you vote yes, you will say there will be a public hearing on January 22nd. All we need is a simple majority for that. On January 22nd, there's a public hearing. To actually put a charter amendment on the ballot, there has to be two-thirds, which is five out of seven, would have to approve it at the January 22nd meeting. If it's approved then, then it will actually go on the ballot.
And does the city have to pay something in order to put this on the ballot? Or is there...
Yes. There's a number of things that we would have to pay. Number one, there's an election cost. It varies. Probably at the November election, it would be less because there's a lot of statewide issues, county issues, things like that, so there's not as much of our cost, as opposed to like in May when we were the only... Our levy in May was the only one on the ballot, so we had to basically pay the full cost of what it would do that. So there's the cost of the election. There's also in Section 3 here, "Shall mail a copy of the proposed amendments to each elector whose name appears upon the polls." So basically, we have to do a mailing, and even a postcard mailing, you're probably talking probably $3,000 or $4,000 to do that, to send that mailing out by the time you get postage and the printing of that to the 3,000 or 4,000 registered voters.
And this is more likely, if we... If it goes to the public hearing and then we pass it from there, it's more likely to be on the November ballot rather than the May ballot?
It cannot meet the... The timing of the May ballot would... It would have to be filed by, I believe, February 9th, and if January 22nd it's approved, there's a 30-day effective period, so it wouldn't be effective until after February 9th. So we could not make the May ballot unless we had done this as an emergency ordinance. But we did not, so it would... The soonest it could come on is the November 2018 ballot.
And then also, they will register, if it would pass, well, one is if we introduce it, two is if five out of us, out of seven, would agree to go on the ballot, and then three, if it passes from the voters, the county would register the voters that are 16, 18, but they would not be able to vote electronically either. So they would have to use... You correct me when I say something wrong, Mark.
No.
I do that all the time. They'd have to pay for ballots of some sort, just with the...
And so then we would have to pay for that also.
It would probably factor into the cost of the election cost. They would have to do some type of provisional ballot, just like if you came in today and maybe you had changed addresses, but it didn't go... It wasn't in the system. You would do a provisional ballot, and that's what they would do, so they would have to count them separately, particularly in November when there's all these statewide issues on there, and it's not the only issue on the ballot. They would have to do something different to count those. So yes, there could be a cost. I don't know how much that would be.
And I know we've talked about this at least two or three different times.
Yes.
But this is the process to say, okay, where... How do we want to move this forward? This is the first step, if you want to move it forward at all, though.
And I know council, in the discussions, at least the last time, there's the... There is a charter review committee that's every 10 years, that these are the type of issues that they could consider. That's another thing that we could just sort of put this on the docket, so to speak. We've probably got another three or four years until that occurs, but that would be something for them to consider. That's when most of our... Historically, our charter amendments have come out of the charter review committee.
Correct. The charter review committee consists of 15 members of the city. It's every 10 years, and normally, these are the things that are discussed.
Yeah.
These type of changes.
Yeah. But one is, the two kids are very sharp kids. I can't remember their names, and they've done a great job doing this. And this is where we're at today, to decide how to move forward or not, and this is the first step.
I don't know if I can go and order, but...
So what now, this is a, you know, so we need a... This is official, so we'll need a motion and a second and do the whole...
I guess, I guess just because I missed the last meeting, so I'm not sure how much everybody talked about it, but I'm actually against this. I think, you know, I appreciate the kids being interested in government and wanting to change the law and wanting to make a difference in their community. I think that's awesome. But I think that they could do that by coming to the city council meetings and talking about certain things if they want to have change, rather than going through this whole process for them to be registered to vote, for the city to pay for that, for us to pay for the counting of the votes. I think, you know, it's awesome that they want to be involved, that they want to have a say in government, and we ought to encourage that, and we ought to encourage them and adults and older people to come to the city council meetings and tell us what they think about how the city's doing. But they can do that already without us registering them to vote.
And I guess a couple other qualifiers. We did have our city attorney look into this. I think the records in Ohio are, there are no other cities in Ohio that have adopted this. There are, I thought, if I remember correctly, two cities in the nation?
There's a couple in other states that have...
Couple cities in the nation, in other states that have let 16-year-olds vote.
And we have a legal opinion that says that the charter amendment is the way to do that, but this is somewhat unprecedented in terms of if there's a challenge. The municipal attorney has approved this legislation, but that doesn't mean that somebody couldn't challenge it, even if it was approved. So that's... No one's done it, so we don't know how that would work.
So this is a time, you know, we can discuss, so it doesn't... It's not a public at this point till the public hearing, but Nick, I...
I think we should move to the next level, to be honest with you. I don't know that the seven of us... I mean, we all have our opinions and who we've talked to, but I think it would be interesting to see what the electorate thinks about it. I'm not saying I'm for or against it, but I just think that needs to be opened up by a larger group of people to make that determination. I appreciate the efforts that the high school boys did to get it here, and I think we should further it along as far as we can go. If it dies on the vine at the public meetings, so be it, but I think that's where I stand.
Boris, any input?
I'm kind of tending against it, but I would like to see it go to the next level. If there's anybody that has opinions, I'd like to hear them. I think that's good because if it doesn't pass, like, there would be some ideas for the Charter Review Board. There's been some discussion on it, and I'd just like to hear what people have to say.
Mr. McGill, and any other comments?
I'll echo some of the same ones that have already been made. I think the individuals who brought this issue forward are very bright, very concerned about the future of politics, et cetera, and government and legislation that government brings. But I think that the proper, as I said before, I think that the proper setting is charter review, get a more diversified background of individuals to rule on it. But I'm also in favor of bringing it to public hearing to see what they say as well.
I think I'd have to pretty much agree with what Daryl said, bring it to public hearing, but the charter review is at the ideal venue.
I guess just to add on to what I said already, but I just think that high school kids, some may be very interested in government and others may not be, and they may find it to be an opportunity to kind of, I don't know, vote in SpongeBob SquarePants in a council and think that that's really funny, but that's not going to help the city. So again, I'm against it.
I'm opposed to it. I think it's something that should go before the Charter Review Committee, and I think that's when the proper setting for it is. And I don't like the idea of kind of one-off and just doing this one, you know, kind of nitpicking the special one here and special one there, especially here. I think we've already got a process in place. I think the high school students did great work on this. They put a lot of effort into it, but it's just something that I think belongs to Charter Review.
And I think, you know, we are elected, and it is our job at times to make those decisions, because we don't have a public hearing on everything. I also believe the Charter Review Committee is the place to do that. I have talked to a lot of different people about it. It's been majority, at least now, not scientific, granted, it's just very anecdotal, is that they're very much opposed to it. But with that, that's why we are here to follow these steps to, in good conscience to say, but what we want to do. So as I said, I agree with a couple of you that this should wait and go to the Charter Reviews, it'll go to the Committee of 15, which then eventually, if they decide to put it on, would one, come to us again to be voted on by one to approve the Charter Committee, to then be vote... To be put to the voters to vote on, so... Any other comments? Seeing none, may I have a motion to introduce ordinance number 2018-1?
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number 2018-1.
May I have a second?
Second.
And roll call.
Motion by Mr. Edwards to introduce ordinance number 2018-1, an ordinance submitting charter amendments to the electors of the city of Belbrook at the general election to be held November 6th, 2018, seconded by Mr. McGill. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestutter?
No.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
No.
Mr. Schweller?
No.
Mayor Baird?
This has only happened twice in my whole six years, and I vote no. So I would like to thank the kids because it really was worth doing. It's always something we could look at. I guess in theory, they could petition it.
They could.
So at this point, they would... Could have the right to gain signatures, to have something put on the ballot, and then I guess we'd have to pay for it. So that still is an option, and with the Charter Review, what we have to do is in the charter as far as mailing and all those kinds of things. So I know the kids would probably be disappointed, but I think it's part of our job, or my job as elected official, to sometimes say, this is not something we want to do at this time, and especially be that far out front when no one else has done it. We've not seen case studies, and I don't want to be paying attorney fees to determine case law on voting at 16 when everyone else is emancipated at 18. So thank you, council, very much. Moving on, resolutions. We have one, two, three, four resolutions this evening. Resolution 2018-A. Mr. Schweller.
Thank you, Mayor. City of Belbrook Resolution Number 2018-Capita A, resolution by the council of the city of Belbrook requesting the county auditor to certify the total current tax valuation of the city of Belbrook and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by a specified number of mills. Whereas the council of the city of Belbrook, Ohio desires to request the voters to approve a 1.75-mill indefinite fire operating levy in excess of the 10-mill limitation for the purpose of providing and maintaining fire apparatus in buildings, or the payment of permanent part-time or volunteer firefighters to operate the same, including the payment of firefighters' employers' contributions required under Section 742.34 of the Revised Code, or the provision of ambulance, paramedic, or other emergency medical services operated by a fire department, and whereas pursuant to Section 5705.03 of the Revised Code, council is required to certify to the county auditor a resolution requesting the total current tax valuation of the city of Belbrook and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by a specified number of mills. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves, Section 1, that pursuant to the provisions of Section 5705.19 of the Revised Code, it is necessary that additional tax be levied in excess of the 10-mill limitation for the benefit of the city of Belbrook for the purpose of providing and maintaining fire apparatus in buildings, or the payment of permanent part-time or volunteer firefighters to operate the same, including the payment of the firefighter employers' contribution required under Section 742.34 of the Revised Code, or the provision of ambulance, paramedic, or other emergency services operated by a fire department at a rate not exceeding 1.75 mills for each dollar valuation, which amounts to 17.5 cents for each $100 valuation for a continuing period of time. Section 2, that the question of passage of said annual additional tax levy would be submitted to the electors of the city at an election to be held on May 8th, 2018. If a majority of the voters voting on this renewal levy vote in favor thereof, that tax levy will be placed on the tax list in duplicate for the tax year 2018 for collection and calendar year 2019. Section 3, that pursuant to Section 5705.03 of the Revised Code, the county auditor is hereby requested to certify to the city of Belbrook the total current tax valuation of the city and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by the number of mills specified in Section 1 hereof, and the clerk of council is hereby directed to certify forthwith a copy of this resolution to the county auditor upon its passage. Finally, Section 4, if this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Yes. First off, I just, as you were reading that, I noted in Section 2, the second sentence, it says this renewal levy. It should say this additional levy. That was just so that would amend the resolution with that. What this... To put it levy on the ballot, there's a two-step process. The first is to get the total current tax valuation from the county auditor. Basically, what the county auditor will do is tell you how much a 1.7-mill levy will generate. Once you have that number, then the next step, which will happen at the next meeting, is another resolution that authorizes the placement of that levy on the ballot. Again, this is a 1.75-mill continuous fire levy. Council had a... Or the city had on the ballot in November, a 3-mill for fire police and for some general purposes that did not pass. This is going back and asking for a fire-specific levy to meet the needs that we requested with that levy last November.
Questions on council? I know we've...
And this money will go directly to the fire fund?
Yes.
This will not go in the general fund at all?
No, this will go directly to the fire fund, can only be used for fire purposes. As this goes through the process, we'll put out specific information of what this... What the intent, the purpose of this money is for the fire department.
Any questions on council? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-A?
Would you like to move for the adoption of Resolution 2018-Capita A?
May I have a second?
Okay.
And roll call.
Motion by Mr. Schweller to adopt Resolution 2018-A, a resolution by the council of the city of Belbrook requesting the county auditor to certify the total current tax valuation of the city of Belbrook and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by a specified number of mills, seconded by Mrs. Middlest... I'm sorry, seconded by Mrs. Seager-Lawson. Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestutter?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, Resolution 2018-B. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number 2018-B, a resolution authorizing the city manager slash finance director to file with the Green County Auditor requests for advances of taxes collected. Whereas the Green County Treasurer is in the process of collecting property taxes for 2018, and whereas the tax settlements will return the city those taxes collected for the police, fire, general, and police pension funds, and whereas these settlements will not be ready in final form until after a significant amount of the taxes are collected, and whereas such advances of taxes provide the city with a percentage of taxes already collected which can then be expended by the city. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves, Section 1, that the city manager slash finance director is hereby authorized to request advances of taxes in amounts authorized by the Green County Auditor at those times during 2018 when sufficient taxes have been collected, and Section 2, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Yes, as stated, the Green County Treasurer collects property taxes. The bills, if they haven't already gone out, will be going out shortly. They're due by mid-February. Generally, the city doesn't get the final settlement of that until March or so. What this allows is as those taxes are collected, we can get in advance on those, we can get that money up sooner. It helps our cash flow and allows us to put those funds to use sooner than they would be if we didn't get them until March.
Any questions on the council? We do this quite regularly. Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-B?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2018-B.
May I have a second?
Second.
And roll call.
Motion by Mr. Edwards to adopt Resolution 2018-B, a resolution authorizing the manager slash finance director to file with the Green County Auditor requests for advances of taxes collected, seconded by Mr. McGill. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestutter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, Resolution 2018-C. Mrs. Middlestutter?
Thank you, Mayor. City of Belbrook Resolution Number 2018-C, a resolution approving the combination of lots number 3, 4, and 18 at 22 South Main Street into a single lot, and the splitting of this single lot into lots number 3A and 18A. Whereas the city of Belbrook's consulting engineer and the Belbrook Planning Board have recommended approval of the combination of lots 3, 4, and 18 at 22 South Main Street into a single lot, and whereas the city of Belbrook's consulting engineer and the Belbrook Planning Board have recommended approval of the new single lot at 22 South Main Street into lots number 3A and 18A. I think we need a word there, splitting of those lots. Whereas the city of Belbrook subdivision regulations stipulate that changes to a recorded plat shall be approved by action of the Belbrook City Council. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves, Section 1, that the combination of lots number 3, 4, and 18 at 22 South Main Street is hereby approved for recording purposes. Section 2, that the splitting of the combined single lot at 22 South Main Street into lots number 3A and 18A is hereby approved for recording purposes. Section 3, that the mayor and clerk of council are authorized to affix their signatures to the revised record plan for that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Yes, the planning board heard a request from the owner of 22 South Main Street back in November. This is the easiest way. Right now, this is the current situation. There are actually three lots, including there's this back portion here, there's the main lot with two buildings on it, and then there's this sliver over here on the side. What is being requested is that all three of those lots be combined into a single lot, and then they get split back out, and really what happens then is they'll be split where the front house is its own lot encompassing this slide sliver here, and then the back lot is its own lot. So this is 3A up front and 18A back there. This is what it'll look like if approved, is this lot line, and then everything back here will be separate. The owner requested this before, really for resale purposes. Right now, it's a single lot with this back area being a separate lot. By doing this, if he ever wanted to, he could sell the front house separately than the back, what was probably a garage at some point, but it has full facilities. It has a bathroom and things like that. It's operated as its own separate business now. So really, this just cleans it up and makes these two lots. The parking, he has in agreement with the two... He owns them, the... With the tenants, if he ever sold them, he'd have to provide some type of access, parking access, to this front lot. They do not have any parking spots, but they could do that through some type of Eastman or whatever. It would... I would assume whoever bought the front house would require that before they purchased it to have access to the parking spots on the other lot. So the planning board did approve that, and to get it fully reported, we need to take that to get the mayor's and the clerk of council's signature also.
But Mark, is there a problem? When you split that, the address of the second lot will change, right?
Yes, and I think actually, right now, one of these is listed as 24 South Main Street. The front street is 22, but there is already a 24. I think it already has a separate address, but yes, we'll make sure that we get that correct so that there's separate numbers for public safety purposes or mail delivery, whatever those needs are.
Taxes, too.
Yes. Well, right.
The other thing is, does it make a difference? That's own business, and that is a business. It's only access being an alley. Is that an issue? Because right now, they're combined and has a Main Street access. It's just a question.
Yeah, we... I think we talked a little bit about that with the planning board, but no, we did not see any issue because it is a public alley and it is actually a paved alley. It's not... You know, some of our alleys we've abandoned, or at least not formally, but they've been abandoned and they've grown over, but this is actually almost a side street as much it is an alley. So we did not see any issue with that. This back lot was already... The only access to it was via the alley, so...
Right. I didn't know if the change would make a difference.
We did not find anything in the zoning code that restricted that based on the current use.
But you know what I'm saying? It's only access would be an alley. It is a business. I didn't know if that was...
I assume that fire apparatus can get down that alley?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's already operating that way today.
Yes.
It's as wide as some of our streets.
Yeah.
In the downtime area, yes, it is.
Well, it's got pretty big parking in the lawn.
Yeah.
Now, that's the only alley I know. It's got a stop sign, too.
Well, okay. Well, okay.
It does have one on the west side. Because the main, the way parking lots, you go from main and then go out to West Street.
Is there any benefit or detriment to making it a street?
I guess the detriment would be the cost of improving it, and I don't know that you have the space to truly make it a street.
Yeah, probably wouldn't meet any regulations.
It probably wouldn't meet our new-
No, no, so that's, yeah, so I think just, we did, it's probably been five years ago, they were repaved, and we treat them, you know, some of these alleys, we've treated them like streets in terms of keeping them up to date and passable, but yeah, I don't think we could, we could make it wide enough. There's not enough room there.
Properties are always very well maintained, too.
Yeah, it is.
Well, it's kind of good to clean up some of these lotlines, too, get that stuff.
Yes, yeah, particularly this little sliver down here, we didn't do a lot of research to figure out where that came from, but obviously, at some point, this owner here sold them that, whether that was because of a setback or there was something going on there, but, right, just to clean it up and not have all these separate parcels that don't really mean anything.
Because I'm sure when that surveyed, was surveyed back in the 1840s, there was probably some rocks and trees, stated the slotlines.
Yeah, I can imagine.
Any other questions on this? It already has been approved by the planning board?
Yes.
So seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-C?
Yes, Mayor, I approve that we adopt Resolution 2018-C.
May I have a second?
Second.
And roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Middlestetter to adopt Resolution 2018-C, a resolution approving the combination of lots 3 and 4 and 18 at 22 South Main Street into a single lot and splitting the, and splitting of this single lot into lots 3A and 18A, seconded by Mr. Schweller. Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Last resolution, Resolution 2018-D. Mr. Greenwood?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 2018-D, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a three-year agreement between the city of Bel Brook and the fire captains, fire lieutenants, and firefighters/medics represented by the International Association of Firefighters. Whereas, the city met with the non-exempt full-time fire employees represented by the International Association of Firefighters to review the terms of the labor agreement covering wages, friends, benefits, and work rules, and whereas, the parties agreed to terms for a three-year contract starting December 1, 2017, and concluding November 30, 2020. And whereas, the city believes that this three-year contract will allow for the continued provision of exceptional fire and emergency medical service to the residents and is in the best financial interests of the city. Now therefore, the city of Bel Brook hereby resolves, Section 1, that the city manager is hereby authorized to execute a three-year agreement attached here into, between the city and the fire captains, fire lieutenants, and firefighter/medics represented by the International Association of Firefighters with effective dates of December 1, 2017 to November 30, 2020. Section 2, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Yes, the contract with the firefighters expired as of November 30 of 2017. We've been in negotiations with them over the past several months. We have come to a conclusion to those. The full contract is attached for review, but just to highlight what some of the changes were, first of all, it's another three-year contract. This will be the second three-year contract we have with the firefighters. It is, it will be retroactive to December 1, 2017. It does provide a 2.75% increase in pay per year for each of the salary positions. It has an increase in the officer-in-charge pay from $1 to $1.50 per hour, although that is an increase with the staffing changes we're having, we're going to see a significant reduction in the number of officer-in-charge hours, so it will actually reduce the amount that we'll be paying for officer-in-charge time. It does change the contract to allow for captains to earn overtime when they're on the 24, 48-hour shift. Our two captains are going to be moving to that shift once this contract is approved, so the previous contract did not allow for that. We did modify some of the sick leave language to give the city a little bit more power in terms of sick leave use. We increased the sick leave payout at retirement to, we added a few days of that from the previous contract. We adjusted the vacation accrual and language within that section, and we added the tuition reimbursement language, but that language was exactly what is in the personnel manual, it's just now included within the contract. So those are the primary things. Was, actually enjoyed going through this with the firefighters, talking about, I think we had a good contract to begin with that we adopted three years ago. There weren't a lot of significant changes, and I think we came to a good conclusion to this, and we'll get this signed and have another three-years agreement in place.
Any questions for the city manager? I know we've talked about this a couple different times. I'd just like to thank Mark for the negotiation without needing the, or having the necessity to go out and get outside legal counsel. So in the past, there's been other contracts we've negotiated in the years gone by that it's cost some substantial money to negotiate. If there is no further questions-
I just was going to say, I think that's a good alibi.
Yeah.
Yes.
Any other comments from council?
Just to record your comments, I think Mark did a good job on negotiating this to save us some money and not using outside legal counsel, and I appreciate your efforts in that regard.
Thank you.
With that, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-D?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution number 2018-D.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
And roll call.
Motion by Mr. Greenwood to adopt Resolution 2018-D, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a three-year agreement between the city of Bel Brook and the fire captains, fire lieutenants, and firefighter/medics represented by the International Association of Firefighters, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes, and that is all we have for resolutions this evening. I believe we do have a city manager report.
Yeah, just a couple items since our last meeting. I, one, I know sometimes people take it for granted, but the efforts of our public safety and service departments, in the last month, we've had an extremely busy month. Just in the past two weeks, we've had two house fires, both of which we arrived at, we were able to extinguish before it got too in-depth. With the help of Shore Creek Township, Washington Township, Shrum Valley Township, we were able to do that. But if you can imagine fighting a fire when it's five degrees, I was outside standing at one of them and not doing anything, and I was cold. I can't imagine if you're in there spraying water and out there for hours at a time. I think sometimes people take some of that for granted, what they do. Police officers, you know, they, when it's negative five, negative seven out there, they're out there 24/7. They're the ones out there helping people if their car can't start or if their keys are locked in there. They don't have a choice but to be out there. Our service department, Christmas Eve, six hours, those guys were in plowing because that's what needed to be done. So I, sometimes I think people don't realize, they just take it for granted that that's what these people do. They don't think twice about coming in on Christmas Eve to make sure that the streets are safe for people to go to Christmas services and do things like that. So I just want to, just thank them for their efforts. It's, it's, excuse me, it's frustrating at times, you know, when you hear a lot about, you know, increased taxes and things like that, that people don't approve, but these people come every day and they do their job, and they do it very well, and people don't know that they're there all the time, but when they, when they need them, they're there and they come and do it. So I just want to make sure that they get recognized and that they, that people do maybe thank them sometime when they're out there for what they're doing. So that's all I have this evening.
All right. Moving on, committee reports, the service.
I don't have an official report today, but I just wanted to reiterate some of what is in the newsletter. When there's a snow event, please for the public to remember to remain off the road during snow and ice storms unless travel is necessary, remove all parked cars from the street, reduce your speed, and drive cautiously. Do not allow children to make snowboards near the edge of the road, and do not plow, blow, or throw snow back into the roadway. I think that's some good advice that would help our service crews a lot.
Thank you. Safety.
I'd just like to reiterate a little bit what Mark said. I think we all kind of really don't pay attention to the value we have in our departments, and like Mark brought out, the weather changes everything, especially when you have events like fires, accidents, and things like that. And I think most people here, everybody in council, I think, myself, we understand what it takes to keep those things going, and those people that we have employed here at the city just do an outstanding job. And, you know, like Mark said, if you see one, just thank them because they answer the call. You can call, I don't care, anytime. There'll be somebody show up, and they'll be ready to do the job, so. So thank you for bringing that up, Mark. That's all.
And that's not it?
My comment is kind of along with what Bill says, saying is that we've got a levy that's going to be on the ballot, and that goes for our department, our fire services, and I wonder if I'd recognize the fact that without an income tax, that's the only method that we have to pay for these services, and we all talk about how good they are and how much we appreciate them, but there is a cost to them, and without having an income tax, we've got to pass these levies to get this stuff and to keep it the way that we've kind of grown accustomed to in a large part, I think, kind of take for granted. Be more to come on levy, too, so we'll talk more about that as we get closer.
Thank you. Is that it, Mike?
Yes.
Community affairs?
Yes, we have reappointment of some board members that will be coming up. The Board of Zoning Appeals and Property Review Commission, Philip O'Grady, February 1, 2018 to January 31, 2023. Village Review Board, Jennifer Bowersock and Jacqueline Greenwood are both up for reappointment from the same four-year period, February 1, 2018 to January 31, 2021. And the Historical Museum Board of Trustees, Dwight Bartlett and Mary Lou Eppers, terms running from January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2021. So those folks need to be reappointed to those, and they've agreed to.
Yes.
May I have a motion then to reappoint, to the Board of Zoning Appeals Property Review Commission, Philip O'Grady, to the Village Review Board, Jennifer Bowersock, and Jacqueline Greenwood, and Historical Museum Board of Trustees, Dwight Bartlett and Mary Lou Eppers.
Sure.
And-
Oh, second.
Okay, who's the first? Okay, one, two, and roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Middlestetter to reappoint board members with expiring terms, seconded by Mrs. Seager-Lawson. Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. That is all, anything else on community affairs?
Actually, there is on, we have two openings, one on the Historical Museum Board and one on the planning board.
Correct.
So those openings have been posted, so if you're interested in serving on either of those boards, please contact the city and look at the website, there's an application there, and come on down.
And I would like to thank Louis, our cameraman, for serving on that board. He has been termed out of the planning board, so he can no longer be on, so thank you, Louis.
Yes.
Thank you, Louis.
Is that all we have for community affairs?
That's all.
Okay. Any old business to come before city council? New business? We've got a couple items tonight. First, we did have a work session this evening. In that work session, we discussed council appointments and assignments for the committees. We agreed to keep the committees the same as we had them last year, with Finance and Audit Chair Mike Schweller, Safety, Forrest Greenwood, Community Affairs Elaine Middlestetter, and Service Donna Seager-Lawson. So I do need a motion to appoint the new committees, and all the other people while serving on those committees will stay on the committees they've been on.
So move to-
May I have a second?
I'll second.
And roll call.
Motion by Mr. McGill to approve the council committee assignments for 2018, seconded by Mr. Greenwood. Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Also, we need a deputy manager. We have this discussion, or deputy, well, I'm not going to say anything. I'm not going to say anything. We do need a deputy mayor. We did have a discussion in our work session about this, and I think we all agreed that Mr. Schweller has performed a good job, not just as Finance Committee Chair, but also as our deputy mayor, and I need a motion to appoint Mike Schweller to be deputy mayor.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mike Schweller deputy mayor.
And may I have a second?
I'll second.
Yeah.
Upstein.
Okay.
And roll call.
Motion by Mr. Edwards to appoint Mr. Schweller to serve as deputy mayor, seconded by Mr. Greenwood. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Upstein.
Mayor Baird?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, for your service on both, both as deputy mayor, and hopefully, I think you've had to sit over here a couple times in the six years, maybe once.
Not very often.
Not very often, but thank you for your service.
We also need a motion on that.
I'm getting there.
Sorry, reminder, sorry.
I think I got it down. We also had an executive session this evening, and one of the things that did come out of that executive session is our annual review of our city manager. We review his goals and accomplishments over the past year, and we decide on any raises or merit bonuses. As you know, our city manager is both a finance director, CPA, and a MP?
MPA, yes.
MPA, Masters in Public Service. It's a very hard job to find that one person to do both. So we did agree to give our city manager a 3% raise in salary and an 8% merit bonus, whichever year we have the flexibility with merit bonus. And I do need a motion to give the city manager his 3% salary raise and 8% merit bonus.
Make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
And roll call.
Motion by Mr. McGill to approve the city manager's 3% pay increase and 8% merit bonus, seconded by Mrs. Seager-Lawson. Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. That, I think, is all the new business. Have you covered all?
Yes.
Okay, and open discussion.
I'd just like to thank Mr. Schlaghe for his work this past year. We went through his accomplishments item by item, and it was a number of them, it was a hard year. I just wanted to thank you for your efforts. And the other thing, I'll just echo your sentiments on our service and police and fire. I had the opportunity on Christmas Eve to spend some time with one of our police officers. It was snowing really hard, you know, when everyone's around the house with their family, they're out working, and, you know, it's, we just appreciate their dedication and service to the city.
Forrest?
I have nothing, Mayor.
Move on. And open discussion, anything else?
And I echo all those sentiments of the city manager that they've done an exemplary job of handling those, those issues for the citizens here and they do a fabulous, fabulous job for us.
Thank you.
They absolutely do. We are known in neighboring communities as they, they know when they get to Bellebrook because the roads are clean. So we have a good reputation and it's because they do such a good job. Thank you.
I agree that service employees as well as the police and fire do a great job. I know that we've, this is like record-breaking coldness that we've had here in the last, I think, 10 days or so. Because I'm in the utility business, we watch the weather all the time. So I've been reading a lot of articles about how cold it is and there hasn't been a cold snap like this in like several decades. So the folks that do work outside, we really appreciate it. I also wanted to echo that the city manager did a great job last year, a whole page and a half of accomplishments, including renegotiating the fire contract, working with us on the levy, and, you know, the many accomplishments that we had in 2017.
Ms. Schweller?
What I was going to add is that, Don, Mark, if you could pull up the city website quickly on your computer, just kind of the homepage, there's a pretty impressive picture taken with the winter snow and ice on, it looked like Little Sugar Creek and Mark tells me it's done by Don Music, our assistant to the city manager. Just wanted to congratulate Don, he gives kind of a neat photo and gives a nice look to the website, plus it kind of indicates that our website's relatively current. Yeah, there it is.
Yes, Don does a, does a very good job of keeping the website up to date, but then he, he has a number of pictures that he's gone out and taken for the various seasons and, and I think it, it does give you the impression when you go to a website and it's, it's current, that you know that somebody's paying attention to it and that probably means that other information that are on here, vectoring gas lines, I mean, he does a very good job of keeping it up to date, keeping the, the information pertinent to what's going on. So if you're ever looking for something and, and you can't get ahold of us, this is a great place to look and get that information.
And we do this all in-house, so.
Yes.
Because these services can be expensive nowadays.
Yeah, good job, Don.
Yep, yep. I just also would like to echo what they said. I'd also, when you talk service department, the big thing when you get cold and then thawing is also our water department guys, which are sort of the same. But I know they're going to, with 58 degree weather, they're going to have issues this week. So, and I'm sure they had issues over the past few weeks.
I forgot to mention that, but yes, they had multiple water main breaks when it gets cold. Now when it warms up, they'll have the opposite, I mean, they'll have more water main breaks, so.
And a lot of our streets, if you don't know, there's concrete with pavement over top, so sometimes you'll see the little ridges, but then also when that water main breaks under there, you just can't dig it up. You got to go through the six, eight inches of concrete first to get to the water main. So it is a challenge, especially when it's zero out and it's blowing water everywhere. So I'd like to thank all of our guys and girls in both fire, police, and service, which includes water and roads, because they did do a great job. I think I was coming back from the Ohio State game, hit the Bellebrook line, it was clear. And where I was coming from, it wasn't off. That's all I have. This is open discussion for the audience. So if anyone has any questions, you have five minutes. I'm going to pick on him in a second, don't worry.
So I'm Ernie Havens. Address is 3291 Streamview Court. I've lived in Bellebrook now for almost 18 years and I own a manufacturing company right outside the city limits in Centerville. But, and I also, about three, two years ago, I was a scoutmaster for Troop 375. So I've taken a little bit of break from public service and decided to spend a little bit of my time back on Bellebrook and start a new magazine called the Bellebrook Shore Creek Neighbors Magazine. It's a community-based magazine. We'll have a local writer, a local photographer. The cover story will be a story on a family from the neighborhood every month, full caller mailed to all the homeowners in Bellebrook and Shore Creek. But I also have reached out to some of you, not all, to let you know that I was doing this and to offer some space to get the message out for the residents from the mayor and others from the council. As far as other details on the magazine, it would definitely have a community calendar that would involve or kind of group together the township and the city. So as far as, you know, the readership of it, we know that the magazine is read, it's kept around throughout the month and it's a good way to get messages to the community in an effective way. There are ways that we can partner together to, to help with the city. I'm all ears, open to ideas. I'm just wanting to let everybody know that that's what I'm up to and hopefully it does bring the community and the local businesses together.
Thank you. And I assume you've probably talked to Chris Ewing already at the Chamber of Commerce?
Going to his meeting this week.
Yeah, that's a her.
I'm sorry.
And I, let's see, that's Thursday.
It's Thursday.
Yeah, and I'll be there, I'm sure.
Okay.
So, great, that's a good first set, there'll be a lot of people there. I can't remember, I can't remember where it's at. It's not at the schools.
Connor Co.
Oh, yeah, Connor, yeah, Connor Co.